And I didn't want to be the only one holding out. There's a whole lot of people on the county meeting because they want to do something about the roads.
Right. Okay. We, we know we've got a problem. We're working to fix those problems, but there's a method to the madness.
Mr. Terry, if it hit your feelings, you know, you're not by yourself, it's countywide.
Yeah, I understand, but I, you know, I'm about foot counter wide. I'm just, you know, I ain't trying to be smart like that. But I'm, I'm, it's because I'm by all of where I live. And where other people live, but I mean, them roads is bad. They bad.
No, no question.
And, you know, I ain't throwing stone for stone, but I did some riding and I bet North City in the county, County Road 97 that run off 800, that road got paved and ain't 10 houses on that road.
97 or 91?
97.
97, 91.
91. Connect to 800.
That connects to, uh, 155.
No, no.
151?
No, that's 151 come through there, right. But when it, yeah, 151, but when it come out back on 190, on 31, it's 97, 95, right.
95, 95.
Right.
I know we paid 91.
Well, 151.
County Road 95?
No, well, when it come back on 31, it's, it's, it's 95.
Oh, that was Commissioner Parnell's request. I mean, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner.
Get it right, get it right. But I mean, I, you know, I.
Commissioner Langston.
Yeah.
Good stuff. We all voted to do the roads.
That's right.
We voted to do together.
So we all paid 13 million all over the roads in the last two years. We hope to do more.
I wish we had been in that number.
Well, I mean, Mr. Terry, we, we shared the love all over this county.
Where?
All over the county. Y'all have had roads paved not since I've been here.
No, we ain't had a road paved since.
Since when?
Shoot, how long ago been, Jay?
Joe?
87 was one of the newer roads in the county, even though it's.
It's been awhile.
It's been about 10 years ago.
87? I mean, not since I've been here, I'm just saying, but we, we're working to try to get these roads paved.
I'm saying, I appreciate.
I mean, we, I mean, we can, listen, I'm just going to go ahead and put on a limb and say this. If y'all want us to go in debt and pave every road in Chilton County and bankrupt this county, hey, just.
No, you don't pay the road.
Get a petition going.
No.
I mean, because that's what it's going to take, guys. When you've got roads that ain't been attended in 20 to 25 years, they're going to come apart.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I got 25 years on me from when I was at 25 years old and I'm coming apart.
Yeah, yeah.
You understand?
You thank y'all, you ain't coming apart like that.
Well, listen, I'd rather rough life now, so I am going to tell you now, I'm, I'm pretty much coming apart. But anyhow, I'm just saying, but, but we started trying to nip this in the bud. The, the previous commission and, and Joe and them tried to with, with, because they didn't have no funding on the previous commission for that. But we got to have funding to do, to do the roads, you know what I mean?
And is anything coming down the pipeline?
We hope to, to increase revenue. We just got to see where that boat's going to find, where that ship's going to land.
Okay, okay.
That's what we hope to see.
So, Mr. Terry, we borrowed 10 million dollars to pave that road, the roads that we paid over the last 10 years. And you know where interest rates are right now. Money's almost free. I mean, we got, what, 2% loans?
Let, let's, 1.9%.
1.9% loans. And what we're doing is using that, that sales tax revenue to pay those loans back. And the plan is we've got a bond that pays off in '22 and a bond that pays off in '23. And we're planning to take that money and snowball it in to pay those roads off. And when we get the first 5 million of that paid off, we're going to try to do another road project. If it happens in this commission and if it don't, it'll be the next commission. But it will be close to having it paid off in this commission in time to do another road project. But, you know, we, we, instead of bonding a big amount of money and, and locking ourselves into a 40-year payment, we're trying to do a little bit and pay as we go. And it's going to take some time. And I, I understand what you understand is if you're not here and on the forefront of our mind when those decisions get made, you'll get left out. And I, I respect that, but we, we've got to, we've got to catch up on the ones that, that we just built before we do another road project. So it, it could be three to five years.
Three to five years?
Yes.
How long it take us to build a storm shelter?
Huh?
How long it take us to build a storm shelter?
Storm shelter.
How long it take us to build one?
That, that, that was a whole lot of money in that storm shelter. What about paving?
What am I?
How about repaving? We ain't talking about the road that already paved.
What'd you say about the money with the storm shelter?
I said, that was good money, that storm shelter.
Yes, sir, that's right.
That's what I said, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, but hey, we didn't lie to you.
No.
We kept our word, did we? It took a little bit.
Yeah, just a little. It took a little time, but you still kept your word.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate it. And I believe we're going to get the road paid for, really do, I do.
There's a lot of roads.
But in all of me, it's a thousand of them there, they just bug you dead. I got here the combination to the shelter.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right, good deal. Well, thank you for what you do.
Yes, sir.
You do a good job keeping your community represented to make sure y'all in line and.
Yeah, I, I, I promise you, you just don't know. Well, you do know your county commission, but I tell them, you know, I'm not a commission. I don't need to go to them. So we'll go then, I thought about, oh, no, I don't need to come out here. So many people don't, it ain't.
Well, we got a packed house tonight. We may have a COVID spreader here.
Well, you never know. Well, it's, well. Well, I appreciate you. Uh, see y'all September 18th.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Mr. Owesley? How were y'all tonight?
Pretty good, how are you?
Good, good.
Uh, we're just here to see about getting some, uh, speed bumps put up on 753.
Okay.
We've, uh, had some issues with speeding right there in the entrance to Hunter's Ridge.
Right.
Uh, that's the only entrance in and out of there. And our boys had to witness, I mean, yes, it's our dog, we didn't have it on the chain. And we're not running that yet Friday morning, but if that guy was swerving just a little bit as fast as he was going, they could have killed both our boys.
Right.
Taking out the trash.
So, uh.
Is this local people that are coming through there? Is this a heavy travel road?
It's the same vehicle. I can't tell you how many times, there's about five or six different vehicles every day. But more, I mean, there's people all throughout the day.
Right.
From 6:30 in the morning to 8 o'clock in the morning and from anywhere from 3:00 to 6:30 or so, people coming home from work and everything, going to school and going to work. And they, um, when I came down Friday, I told them, or said, told them, they could sit in my yard because they can, I got the shop right there on the edge of the road, they can sit in my driveway and they can make a lot of money just on speeding tickets.
Right, right.
Because I think speeding right there is 35.
So, that runs off 37, correct?
Yes, it turns off 37, then in the curb it turns into 81, I think.
Yeah, then 754 turns off there also going back toward Plano.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. 73 is.
And just, and I talked to a lot of folks in Hunter's Ridge and they said that they would like to, I mean, they would love to have them put up too, but.
Well, it's kind of hard to put a, a, a speed bump on a county road, just it's not a residential, you see what I'm saying? On a residential road and.
It's right in the curb. People's got to start slow, I mean, it's, you start slowing down right past Hunter's Ridge anyway, then I understand. That's what I was, we were talking about. I was like, I don't know if a county road in Chilton County, that's not at the city limits to have speed bumps.
Right. What we can do is ask the sheriff to step up patrols out there and see if he's.
I've seen a couple since Friday and I appreciate that.
They've been pretty good about that when we've had speeding complaints.
They're more than welcome to sit in our yard.
You know, it generally doesn't take but one or two tickets and people get, the word will get out.
And I, it's already out. I, I posted something on Facebook, I mean, on social media and it didn't take long to get around Chilton County.
Right.
So, but, uh, I mean, the guy didn't even stop. He drug his car way on past the house. Um, what would something like that cost?
To put the speed bumps in?
Yeah.
Oh, it's not expensive. Tony, you have a, just off the cuff idea of what a speed bump costs?
Ain't a matter you come out of your pocket, it's just a, a three-way county road that's just connected from one county, from County Road to County Road 37. You're going to have a lot of, there's a lot of traffic on that road, is there not?
If, if we put an obstacle in a road that causes an accident, then we're going to be responsible for it. And that's going to be. It's going to be a safety issue for something.
What about a stop sign coming out of the neighborhood? Turning it into a three-way stop?
Like putting one on 753.
So you have to stop at the neighborhood?
But then, I, I understand what you're saying and, and, and trust me, I do. I live on County Road 49. If you don't know where that is, that's Enterprise Road.
Yes.
And me and another commissioner lives on that road actually. And if you don't believe that that's a racetrack.
Oh, yeah.
It is a loud racetrack. And we, we have an officer that lives on that road, right up the road from me. So if you do that and you put a stop sign there, that's only going to stop the speeders right there. You hear what I'm saying? And, and that, and I know that's what you're saying.
All up and down 81 is bad.
But 81, 753? It, it's not a, it's not a stop sign or, it's a people problem. That's what we need to try to figure out, is how to fix the people problem. And if we can figure that out, we fix a lot of problems in this county, city, state, and across the country, but.
And like Mr. Parnell said, it, I mean, it wouldn't take but a few tickets a month to slow a lot of people down.
I think that's our best option, just to really, you know, increase the patrol.
There's a couple of guys that sit there and just got drag cars around the house and that's what, right there in front of the house, because it's probably a quarter mile stretch right there.
Right.
That's what they use to, to test their cars at.
Well, we, the sheriff's shaking his head here. He, he'll get in there and try to get some patrols out.
We'll do the best we can, right Sergeant Ellis?
Thank you, Sergeant Ellis.
You know, the house with the shop right there next to the road, 330?
We're across from Hunter's Ridge.
Right, yeah. Y'all are more than welcome to sit in that driveway anytime you'd like.
Okay.
We're doing our best, we don't, I mean, we understand.
Yes, okay. I didn't know how. This is our first year.
By the time the court gets their part and the state gets their part, it's, we don't really get anything, but.
Really?
But it, it is a deterrent though, and we can, sheriff will go out there and pull some people over and.
And again, what you said on social media will get word out. People will find out, hey, people are looking, and the eyes are on you now. That's going to help.
Uh, the guy that, I mean, I hadn't seen the car, I mean, the guy's from what everybody said has got two vehicles and he hasn't come back down there since Friday.
That's a good thing.
Because I've been sitting on the front porch waiting for him to come by just to see how fast he's going.
Yeah.
But, uh.
Is there anything else we can do?
Not really.
Any ideas or?
Not really. We, we can, we can get Tony to go out and, and evaluate and see if there's anything that he can do without creating a safety issue and he can come back to us and, and tell us if he has some suggestions. But the easiest thing to do is just ask the sheriff, and he said he would, to send, send some patrols to that area and see if he can catch some speeders and slow some people down.
Is that a 45?
Do we, uh, do we, do we still have that little toy that we got? Can we put it up there for?
For 81?
The speed limit thing?
No, it was on.
That was on City Side.
Yeah, City Side.
It was past the house going towards 77.
Oh, good one. But anyhow, can we possibly set that up there and just let people know and listen? Y'all post it on social media, you know, tag us in it, whatever, we'll share it with you. Because listen, it's all over this county.
Yes.
And, but you know, I, I could see the fear in your face, being a mother. I'm a father too, and we're all parents up here. It's a people problem, like I said, and, and you know, people need to be responsible. Listen, I've got tickets, so I know, I've been speeding before too, but that, that's just no excuse. Well, I think we get, we're so busy in life, guys, that we're just not paying attention. A lot of people don't even know, they just, just drive.
They're in a hurry.
I mean, you can ask any officer in this room, you pull somebody over, say, what are you doing? I was just going over, why, why are you speeding? I didn't know why I was speeding. How fast was I going? Or, you know, whatever, so.
I believe in this.
You know?
Protect them, that's why we're.
Yes.
Well, we, we will, we will work with the engineer to see if there's anything he can do as far as stop signs, but, uh, the best methodology out there is to, to get the sheriff to, to, to help us a little bit because he can control that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move down to department reports. Hold on a minute, before we start department reports, Jimmy's got something he needs to do.
Alan and, uh, Darryl and I went to the convention in, uh, Orange Beach two weeks ago. And we usually, our engineers go, our administrator go, and city administrator go. And I picked up an award that I want to present tonight to, to ladies in our commission office. I'm going to start with Ms. Makisha Claykley. She can come up here, please. If y'all want to take pictures or do video.
She's going to get you.
Oh, she's good. You look for that camera. Uh, this, this is a, Alabama ATCA puts on a lot of classes. Uh, these ladies have to go through classes for administration and, and they, they, uh, they, uh, put a lot of time in school and in effort to keep the educated. The laws change daily, daily, from the ethics laws to the financial laws. So they put a lot of time in this and I want to present this to you. This is, um, County Government Education Institute administered by Alabama Local Government Institute and Association of County Commissioners of Alabama hereby certifies that Makisha Claykley has completed the mandatory, ma- Claykley? Has completed the mandatory education requirements certification in county administration and with therefore a presentation made on this date of August 26th. Now I'd like to ask for Ms. Sylvia Singleton to come in, our administrator. I have two awards for her. I, you know, and I, I, this is the same award that, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Claykley has. Uh, Ms. Sylvia completed her, um, mandated education requirements for administrator. Uh, actually, and Ms., I'll, I'll save that for the next one, but this is her award. Thank you. But don't go too far, because I was excited to tell you about this one. She also got an award that day, the only administrator out of 67 counties to finish this within her three-year period, before her three-year period. She got the Outstanding Achievement Award, being known that Sylvia Singleton has completed all requirements of county government and education instituted and has been designated a Certified Alabama County Administrator. Thank God, Jesus. But you, you have to know how many administrators we've been through in this county since I've been on there. By the Association of County Commissioners of Alabama, August 26th, 2021. Ms. Sylvia, you was the only one to receive this award. There was a lot of accolades. Thank you for all that y'all do.
All right, we'll move down to the department reports. Sheriff, would you like to come forward, please?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, so now I want to request a resolution to hire Carolyn Austin as a full-time correction officer effective September 18th, 2021.
Make that resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to request a resolution to hire Byron Oliver as a full-time correction officer effective September 18th, 2021.
I'll make that resolution. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to request a resolution to purchase P25 radios to be purchased with ARPA monies.
Make a resolution to purchase P25 radio.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Um, just for notation, Ms. Sylvia said that our attorney has provided us with a, a resolution for that, uh, to make sure that we meet the requirements of, of the money so that it doesn't have to be paid back. And I believe you said it was 17 pages long?
Yes.
So we're not going to read that into the minutes. But there's a resolution that is kind of completes the application to use the, the COVID money, as we call it, to, to pay for those radios with. All right, any other questions, concerns, or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to request a resolution to receive bids for the following jail janitorial and jail gasoline.
Make a resolution to receive the bids for jail janitorial and jail gasoline.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I'd like to request a resolution to award the following bids, jail janitorial to Alabama Pro Packaging, lowest responsible bid, and jail gasoline to WH Thomas Oil, only bid received.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Back to you, Jim.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Tim, if you will, please, our revenue commissioner?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm here with a request, uh, for a resolution for approval of my 2021, '22 reappraisal budget.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I got a rest, uh, request for a resolution to reclassify Brad Carter from personal property appraiser to a real property appraiser slash business per- personal property effective October 1st, 2021.
I'll make that resolution, Mr. Ellis.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you do.
We didn't put it on his list. It was on the revised agenda to.
Is it in the, is it in your, your packet that you handed out? Okay. Yeah.
No, that's all mine. I thought that's what you just asked for, was it?
No, 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 above it, bullet point two.
I'll make a resolution to approve the job description.
Oh, oh, job description. Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. And I'm going to explain why we did that. There's a resolution on the books, um, to, to, that, that limits, that our caps are raised for an individual unless they're reclassified.
Right.
And there's also a resolution on the books that say that new job classifications have to be verified and voted on and approved by the commission. So for us to move him, we've got to verify that job classification. And that's what we're in the middle of doing right now, but that's why we've got to go through this. And that's so that you just can't create jobs to give people raises for.
My goodness, okay.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I have a request for a resolution to hire Alexa Burnett to fill a vacancy of Cindy Jones in Motor Vehicle Department effective immediately, pay grade as shown in the text.
Okay.
I'll make that resolution, Mr. Ellis.
You say?
He did.
Okay, you get the second, Darryl's got it. We have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by.
Did you say, did you say Cindy Jones?
To replace.
Oh, I thought you said you outside.
No, 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 no.
I was like, okay. I need to pay more attention.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, here with a, a request for a resolution to hire Gabrielle Fuller in Quality Sierra Williams and Motor Vehicles, effective October 1st.
I move we honor a request.
Go ahead.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Alan with a motion, Matt with a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I have to abstain.
Okay, let's record reflect that Mr. Kelly abstains. Motion passes.
Okay, uh, request a resolution, uh, to increase the mail fee, uh, for tags, the fees from $2 to $5.
Okay.
Effective October 1st.
I'll make that resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Uh, this has been discussed a couple of times in work sessions, uh, while we were working on our, our budget. And the reasoning behind this is that Tim's department was losing money on mail-out tags and we, we wanted to get ourselves back to a break-even place. It's not to make money, but it's to cover the actual cost of mailing the tags out.
The cost of mailing one tag out now is $4.96, is that right? Makisha, yeah.
Right.
And this is just a recoup bid. It's definitely not a money-making venture in anybody's eyes.
We want to encourage people to do that as much as possible because that decreases the amount of people in the line. But, uh, Tim's having to rob from other line items to, to pay for that and so we, we, we had to, had to, had to give him some more money to keep him afloat on those mail, mail fees.
Apparently unless your name's Amazon, you can't afford to mail anything, so.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Request a resolution to carry forward, uh, unspent funds left in the 2020, '21, uh, reappraisal budget. This is just a process we go through every year.
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Request a resolution to amend the appraisal budget just to balance out. So if we get right down to the end, if, uh, Ms. Sylvia needs to shift some money or whatever, we, we can do that at the last minute.
I'll make that resolution.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I request a resolution to amend the appraisal budget, uh, no, I suppose we've already done that one. Okay, I request a resolution to amend the appraisal budget, uh, no, I suppose we've already done that one. We've already done. Request a resolution entering into contract with governmental services Alabama LLC for business personal property. Basically, what we're gonna do, we're gonna contract out our personal property apartment and hire somebody to do it cheaper than we can do it ourselves. And I got, I got better places to go with these appraisers.
Okay.
I'll make that resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. All right, Ms. Sylvia, if you will, please. County administrator. Certified county administrator.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request a resolution to forgive a late payment penalty for, um, Alan Herndon, who is the owner of Midas in the amount of ninety-one dollars o- and eight cents. This is a forgiveness of the penalty. He was one day late due to sickness and, uh, this does not forgive the tax.
Okay.
I move we forgive the penalty, late payment penalty from Midas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, next, I'd like to request a resolution to receive the bids for the following, uh, pest control for courthouse, janitorial, and storm shelter resurface.
I move we grant the request to accept these three bids. Receive these three bids.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive these three bids. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Request a resolution to award the following bids, uh, pest control to Connel's Pest Control. It was the only bid we received. Courthouse Janitorial to Alabama Paper and Supply. It was the lowest responsible bid. And Storm Shelter Resurface to I M M S Industrial Coatings. They were the lowest responsible bid.
I move we accept the following three bids.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I would like to request a resolution to accept the resignation of Mr. Tim Watley from the Chilton Water Authority.
I move we accept the resignation of Tim Watley from Chilton Water Authority reluctantly.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, next, I'd like to request a resolution to open the nominations for the Chilton Water Authority to fill that vacant term until August of twenty twenty-five. Uh, Chilton Water Authority, uh, would nominate John Thacker.
Okay, let's do those separately.
Yeah, do we open up the nominations?
Second.
For Chilton Water Authority.
We have a motion and a second to open nominations. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And Chilton Water would like to nominate John Thacker.
We will hold that nomination for the due process. Thank you.
Uh, request a resolution to purchase, uh, an ad for the Chilton Chamber of Commerce. This is done annually and it's in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I'll make a resolution to purchase an annual ad from the Chilton Chamber of Commerce in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, next, um, I'd like to request a resolution, uh, to amend the minutes from July twenty-seventh. The resolution reads, resolution to allow Chairman Parnell to execute a real estate purchase contract with Rex Littleton, Neil Littleton, and Deborah L. Koffer for nine point five acres as presented.
I'll make that motion to amend the minutes. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Uh, just to clarify, the original agreement with the landowner only had one name. And during due diligence, he decided to have the, to have the transaction done in three names. And so it's the same deal, the same land. It's just making sure that we have our, um, i's dotted and our t's crossed if we get audited. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
No, for the same reason. I voted against it in the beginning.
Okay.
Uh, next, I just have the budget listed in case you have any questions at this point. The budget will be ready at the next meeting. We're waiting on some final numbers from Manuka.
Okay. All right, well, thank y'all for all your hard work that you put into it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request a res- I'm sorry. Did anybody have any questions? Okay. Uh, I'd like to request a resolution to have the chairman sign the contract with the Montgomery County Youth Detention Center.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Sylvia. Mr. Tony? County engineer. How are you, sir?
I am good. Thank you, guys. Um, first time I'd like to request a resolution to accept the resignation of John Lovett, uh, operator, effective August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make that resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, we'd like to request a resolution to accept the resignation of Dustin Burnett, operator, effective September sixteen, twenty twenty-one.
What's your operator? I'm sorry. I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Floor is open for-
What was he operating?
He was operating the push-up.
Okay.
Okay, any other, uh, questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, I'd like to request a resolution to accept the resignation of Mark Kleckler, operator, effective September sixth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make that resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion.
My question again, what operator?
Motor driver.
Okay.
You know, I think, uh, Mark's been with us how many years, Tony?
Twenty-three years, three months.
I think we need to send something, him recognizing him for twenty-three years because I think this is something, I don't think he would have chose to resign if that hadn't been a personal issue come up. And I think we need to acknowledge twenty-three years of good service from him.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Commissioner Wigan.
So last week, and this doesn't happen every day, but I had a citizen call me and say, hey, the county just worked our road. And it is the best motorator job that I've ever seen done on any road. It is absolutely perfect. We don't get those very often. So I called Tony and I said, who was it? Tony said, where was it? And so we figured out that it was Mark Kleckler. And, you know, we're getting accolades for the quality of work he does and then losing him at the same time, and that hurts. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to request a resolution to hire replacements, um, taking total number of files.
I move we honor a request to hire five truck drivers.
Second, and I have a question.
We, we have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion.
So are you moving these five truck drivers in these other positions as you're losing the reason you hired five? Because I don't see any request to, to hire the operator, operator and truck operator.
We already, last meeting, we had two get filled yet.
Is that right, Tony? I'm, no. My question is,
No, we're-
The three that are your losing, are you taking drivers and putting them in positions of reason we, oh?
Well, we're doing one of two things. Either we're gonna transfer a couple of people over to fill some of these.
Right.
But when we're looking at hiring truck drivers,
Uh-huh.
We have a bigger pool to choose from than if we tried to go hire an operator.
That's what I'm saying. You're taking some of these truck drivers, putting the operators. That's my question. That's what-
I'm sorry.
That's my question. Okay, yeah, that's my question. That's all I'm-
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So Tony had shared with me in weeks past that generally speaking, when he advertises for an operator, he gets very little, if any, response. And he finds a lot of truck drivers that have equipment operating experience. And sometimes, once he gets them in-house, he can entice them to move over to a machine from a truck.
Yes.
And that's why we keep this perpetual cycle going of hiring truck drivers. Because he keeps taking his drivers and moving them into operator position.
I'm not gonna add to that unless you're gonna add to that later, that we talked about earlier about pay scale. You gonna add to that or you-
Well, Tony and I have discussed that. And Tony said that if the commission would grant him some liberty within his budget, he, he had, he would move some line items around to try to a- address the pay scale. And so what I asked Tony to do last week, and I'm not gonna read these numbers, but I'll provide this to y'all or Tony can, but I had Tony to go out and look at some of our competition. So, so Shelby County, Thorsby, Jemison, and then he got a couple of private companies locally that are advertising for similar type positions. And trying to get us in a place that we can hire or retain some of our, some people. We've, we got some good workers. And the good ones need to be retained. And when we're hiring, we need to be able to hire good workers. And Tony's pay scale right now won't allow him to compete in the market with surrounding municipalities and counties. But one of the things that we're gonna have to address with this, there's a resolution in place that caps any raises at three percent per year. And so we're either gonna have to allow Tony some reclassification or vote to remove that standard if he's gonna, gonna do a lot of changing. Because for a lot of these guys, um, three percent is, what, seventy cents an hour, sixty cents an hour? And, and that won't compete in this job market.
Not only in the hourly wages, but in the health, because our healthcare is so high.
Health insurance is the main thing I hear every time I talk to, talks to every one of our workers.
We've got the same problem we did, started addressing five years ago with the Sheriff's Department. Pay scale. You know what I mean?
It's, it's-
If we're gonna stay in the maintenance department, we need to get our pay scale where we can hire people. If you wanna acquire people and keep them, then you're gonna have to pay them. Now, this day in time, as we can notice, when you got McDonald's paying fifteen, sixteen dollar an hour, why would you wanna jump on a dump truck? Why would you wanna jump on a motorator when you can go somewhere to like some other place and make twenty-five dollars an hour? I don't blame, I don't, I don't blame them at all. Because I'm, tell you, if I go, I'm getting paid. Anybody in this room will.
Things that we need to be, uh, cognizant of and investigate is, is one, the cost of our insurance. And I certainly don't wanna put ourselves in a position where we're getting worse insurance than we have. But we need to shop our health insurance. Uh, Ms. Sylvia has shopped a piece of our health insurance in the last week. And we have one particular group of people that, it, there's five employees that are there. And if we move those five employees into this, this other healthcare provider, and we don't, we did not learn enough about it yet. But they say they're quoting a better coverage policy than what we have. But those five employees will save the county, uh, thirty-six thousand four hundred and eight dollars a year on just five employees. If we found out that that was a, a, a good policy and that, that it doesn't limit our people in what doctors they can see and all those kinds of things. If we converted to that, we could potentially insure the families for about what we're paying now as far as a budgetary item for insurance. And we all love Blue Cross Blue Shield. I have it, y'all have it, everybody has it, and it's easy and it works well. But if, if you can save nearly eight thousand dollars per person by changing insurance, you, you could insure their family.
Yep. I agree. And if we're gonna try to attract younger people who are trying to support families,
That's right.
we've got to have that.
Yeah, so that's something we all need to, to work with Ms. Sylvia on and, and further vet. And it may be that we can't make a move. But this is just an example of, of a group of people that we have on our insurance that she had priced. So that's something that we're gonna work on. Tony was trying to figure out how to address that. But, you know, I, I guess we, we need to let Tony know what we wanna do. Do we wanna rescind that resolution or do we wanna allow him the ability to do some reclassification?
Uh, let's get past this and I'll offer a resolution.
Okay. All right.
We, all we now is to vote, because I think we're on vote side.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will offer a resolution. Would you like me to do that now?
It's up to you, Jimmy.
To, to rescind the three percent raises.
Cap.
Cap that was offered in the prior, previous commission. And that the raises that are brought to us will be, uh, due to evaluations. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, you do evaluations and, uh, timeliness. And that you probably would want them to happen either the, the month before or, or the month after your budget. So that you don't have people coming to you mid-year. So you, you'd put your, my thoughts is you do your raises when you're paying your budget around.
That's right. That's what I, that's what I'm trying to get at. Couldn't get out. But I'm offering that resolution, and if we wanna second discuss it, then we'll discuss it. So if anybody wants to do a second.
Did you finish it?
Yes, sir. What he said, yeah.
Second. So the raises are not gonna be anniversary raises?
No, sir.
From the hire date?
We can't do that because it wasn't discussed in the work session. We're gonna have to wait and do it the next day.
Yes, sir, you're right. So I rescind my resolution.
But that's something-
They're gonna give us a little more time to-
Thank you, Joe. You're right.
Get like one to do them.
You are right.
You're right.
We do, we do have that.
Thank you, Joe. I cannot do that.
But that's something that we need to discuss and think about.
You'll put that on the agenda.
Um, if we, how we want Tony to handle that. Because everybody that's in this room that, that goes to work every day understands where our work environment is right now. And if we want him to have employees, he's gotta be able to retain and hire.
And if you'll look at the package that I gave everybody, budget in there is a reclassification pay scales for all positions.
I love Tony Commission Bone earlier. I heard it on the news this morning. Last year, in the last nine months, five percent inflation. And we were talking about three percent raise. I was gonna discuss that tonight because that very fact that came up today.
You're falling behind.
Three percent's already eaten.
Can you put that on our next agenda for, on work session, please?
Hold on, you withdrew your-
I did, and-
Are you gonna redo it?
Yeah.
Second, okay.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Um, and this is just for your information, since all of this has been printed, I've got another motor greater operator that has resigned. So I will be asking for another resignation and approval, and the number will go to six that I've got to hire. Plus the fact I've got one out with COVID who's been out really, really sick. And I've got a couple others that are out sick. So right now we are shorthanded.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to request a resolution to hire Homer Holland as maintenance supervisor at pay rate shown on the attachment.
I move we grant the request to hire Homer Holland. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, I'd like to get a resolution to accept the following bids, liquid asphalt, diesel fuel, road department gasoline, co-mix, hypotuminous plant mix. Second. Uh, corrugated plastic pipe, roadside striping, hypotuminous placement, and aggregate.
Make a resolution as stated.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And then the last items, request a resolution to award the following bids, liquid asphalt to Vulcan Asphalt, that's the lowest responsible bidder. Diesel fuel to, uh, Thomas Oil, the only bid received. Road Department gasoline to Thomas Oil, only bid received. Co-mix to Advanced Asphalt Products, lowest responsible bid. Hypotuminous Plant Mix to Wiregrass, lowest responsible bid. Corrugated and Plastic Pipe to Harvey Culvert, only bid received. Road Signs to Traffic Signs Incorporated, lowest responsible bid. Striping to Highway Management, lowest responsible bid. Hypotuminous Placement, uh, to Wiregrass, uh, they were the only bid. Uh, Scrub Seal to Charlie Watts, which was the only bid. And Micro Surfacing Seal Coats to Whittaker, the only bid. And then Aggregate to Vulcan, the lowest responsible bid. I'll make that resolution to award the first following bid, Mr. Redd.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. And this, the placement.
Yes, sir.
Is that all we're paying Wiregrass is just to put down two inches, four inches, whatever we're paying for, no prep, nothing else?
In this, um, bid, yes, they are paid per ton for asphalt placed. But we also got a bid from them on machine grade shoulder work and everything. So if there are piles of dirt on the sides of the roads, whatever, they take care of that. But as far as getting things ready, uh, now, it's widening, they do the, um, clipping of the shoulders and everything. But pipe work, patching and all that kind of stuff.
What about leveling? Does that fall into placement?
That falls in there, yes.
Okay.
Uh, they bid out patching, leveling, wearing surface, binder layer.
Okay.
So I have a million dollar question that you all have.
I got a tense in answer.
On this co-mix, is that my favorite trailer?
It is your favorite trailer, but it will only be in use until our second truck gets here.
Okay, and how long is that worth?
It is right now scheduled to be here in December.
Because I've already got a buyer in, in Seattle, Washington.
You want it way away from here.
I want it way from here.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
That is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Gerald Arrington, please, sir. Ken, before we do this, can you give us a little update of what you got going on in the park right now?
Well, the, um, as far as the RV campground, all the utilities are in except for a few lights that the electrician's gonna put up. But they're, uh, he's gonna do that tomorrow if he don't get rained out.
Right.
But, um, water, power, sewage is all in. All the pedestals are in. They're hot. Um, so that's grading and grass.
And we're ready to open everyone.
And we'd be ready to open the RV camp.
And you're ready to open it?
Yes, I'm being ready.
Good.
Good deal. Thank you.
Uh, tonight I wanna request a resolution to hire Scott Tanner, full-time Manuka Park Ranger, effective September eighteenth.
I'll make that resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Uh, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Question?
That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll come down to the, uh, commissioner reports. All right, are we ready? Okay, we'll move down to commissioner reports. Um, I don't have any items tonight. Commissioner Hardy, do you?
Yes, I'd make, I'll make it brief. Uh, as most of us aware that we have, I attended the, well, most of us here attended a city council meeting last night, got an update from Alpha and Commissioner Parnell. Some requests were made on both sides of the street. And, um, I myself am only gonna speak for me tonight. I myself am gonna do everything that I can in my power to make sure to work with the City of Clanton or any, any, the City of Clanton to make sure that, uh, Alpha has what they need to continue this project at the two twelve. That we will not be the holdup on either side. Now, I can only speak for myself, uh, uh, and, um, and, and, but I know that we can work this out so that that project can come to flourish. And I wanted to make that a public announcement that I'm gonna work as hard as I can. And I'm sure to everybody just, commission would too. But I wanted to make an open statement on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Commissioner Bone?
No, sir.
Commissioner Hadley?
Yeah, I, I think we've done, probably done this in the, uh, when we done the budget, but resolution to add the Firefighters Association to appropriation list for that money that they were getting.
It, it has been, it's been added back in the budget. But we, we can tackle that tonight in a separate resolution, or we can tackle it when we approve the budget at our next meeting, however you wanna do it.
Oh.
Because if, if we vote to approve it as is, it's in there. I believe there's forty-six thousand dollars appropriated to them.
It's fifty.
Fifty?
Yeah. Did y'all approve this at your last work session because I wasn't here?
We, did we approve it or did we talk about it?
I had about it.
We talked about it.
We talked about it?
We just talked about it.
We talked about it. So I just missed that conversation because I wasn't here.
Yeah, we talked about taking it out, giving them five thousand dollars.
Yeah. But we talked about it. Our last work session put it back in.
All, uh, is this open for discussion about this?
Well, I mean, we're, Joe, yes, this is something that has been discussed in a, we don't have a resolution on.
I'll make the resolution to uh, add the Firefighters Association to the appropriate uh, list.
For what amount?
Fifty thousand.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Now the floor is open for discussion.
Uh, I was unaware of where the firefighters had spent that fifty thousand dollars until I went to Firefighters Association. And I got grilled pretty good. It seemed like they knew what I said about taking the five thousand, we were talking about giving them, and just put it over the radios. Well, if, if Mr. Billingsley had been invited here, since we were gonna talk about the budget and how much to give them, he could have given all of us the same details he gave us at the firefighters' meeting that night on what they spent the money on repeaters that our sheriff's department can benefit from because they can communicate through the old system, through the repeaters that the fire department has been putting up.
Well, I asked a question.
And I think, I think fifty thousand is a small amount to give them. Five thousand is a joke, and that's why I said that night, put it on the P twenty-five because I thought that's where we were going. I did not have any idea firefighters was putting that money on those repeaters. Plus, they saved most everybody in the county who's around the fire department. Big money on their insurance because they go to training, they spend a lot of money. It comes out of that fifty thousand on bringing the group from Tuscaloosa, and it's called what Butch?
Fire College.
Fire College, and that money comes back to this community and savings to our taxpayers and homeowners.
Are you talking about the fire colleges, you get certified to go to work in Pride One and Hoover and not here?
But that didn't got nothing to do with our volunteers.
Then what is?
Just talking about, under twenty nineteen, the first year of COVID.
Right.
Fire college, they got these training programs, they come out to the fire department. For instance, the propane. Uh, I'm not thinking of, I don't understand. We hooked up, or they hooked up a propane truck and set this tank on fire. And the fireman practiced like five of them, going up, and it's starting flames and cutting that tank off. We had the simulator, the driving simulator that came over for a week, ten days. You had law enforcement, you could go in one part of the trailer and drive, police car, you go in the other end and drive a fire truck. Load the top frame of the fire, and it's cranked up.
Well.
So just, just to, to add a tidbit into those that were not here in the, in the work session. The, the, the commission's intentions were not to, to gut y'all. The commission's intentions were to reduce that line item and replace it with a lot more money coming out of the CARES Act to help address the radios. Uh, we, we didn't understand until we talked to you that for your ISO certification, you had to have a secondary communication device. So what we were wanting to do is put that money toward getting y'all prepared to use the P twenty-five systems in the county. And, and that's what our intentions were, and we had another mechanism of funding to do that, Butch. This was not meant to hurt you. We thought we were helping you.
And it, it was made very clear to Butch because him and I said that on the, on the, on the phone when I told him that. It was made pretty clear to me that we didn't need that two fifty, we'd just take our fifty. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. Butch didn't tell me that. But I want to go, let's go back a little bit further then. In two thousand nineteen, we have never done appropriation like this for the fire department until two thousand nineteen, and Butch brought that to us. In two thousand twenty, we got nothing from the fire association on, with this. Maybe due to COVID because we had our closed meeting. I'm good with that. But Mr. Butch knows, and him and I had this conversation, that he can bring that to us and present to us because anybody appropriates, we know where their money's going. And Mr. Butch, did we not say that would be the first time that we ever done that, and we would do it annually as you brought it to us? Then Mr. Williams, he was invited.
He was invited here to meet and we discussed the budget.
Mr. Butch? No, no, you was invited. You said this, I'm gonna correct, I'm gonna quote you on this, okay? If you will do this, guys, every year we'll revisit this, and I'll bring, and I'll show you where that money is going. Did you not say that?
No, that's not what we're talking about. He was not invited to the work sessions to bring that information to the rest of us.
I know that, but I, I made him aware of that. Did I not that? I said, but what, are you gonna bring us a presentation? Did I not bring that to, ask you about that? Yes, sir. That's right. I was saying, you have been invited to this, and I'm, I'm good with it, but you know, we want to know where this is going. And that, is that not fair? So, you know. I'm good with it. I don't have a problem with it, you know what I mean? But I, like I said, I'm just going back to what you told us when you originally brought this to this commission. This is a new thing that you started, is that correct? And it's a good thing. Yes, sir. But if we're gonna continue to do it, just like any other department, should we not have it being presented to us? That's all I'm saying. And it won't be no confusion.
Well, that's, that's the biggest part of what we do is appropriate and manage the tax money, and we just, Jimmy's right. We, we like to know how it's being spent if we're gonna appropriate it.
And we had COVID last year, and we know that that couldn't have been possible. So I'm, I'm just saying, it ain't on you, it ain't on us, it's just, that just kind of, it almost slipped through here without knowing, is what I'm saying. So.
Okay.
Anyhow.
Alright, we're ready to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. You got anything else, Joe?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Kelly?
No, sir.
Mr. Mills?
I have one update. Um, the lady, Diana Windsor from the Middle Springs Butler Company, she was at the IDA meeting this morning, and there was some issue about Google Maps and ways and uh, diverting people crazy ways onto some of the small dirt roads and bike roads there, and she said she was finally able to get all that updated. So no matter whether you're coming from Atlanta or Birmingham or Montgomery, it's gonna take you on the major roads and keep you off the dirt roads. But she says she had that handled, so. She asked me to give an update, so.
Perfect. Thank you for doing that.
Sure.
Commissioner Williams?
Yep, uh, last night, Jimmy Parnell, CEO of Alpha and Farmers Federation, uh, met with, or spoke to the city council. And there was a few of us commissioners there, uh, here what he had to say. And he indicated that there was some problem with some egos. He didn't elaborate as where those egos were coming from, as one of the stumbling blocks to the Farm Center project. And I tried to figure out what egos we had on the commission that might have been stumbling block to working with the city and getting this done, and what city egos had working with the county to get this done. Any of y'all have any ideas or anything to say on that? I don't have ego. Uh, no, I don't. Jimmy told me last night I didn't have an ego, so. I mean, Jimmy Parnell told me that last night at discussion. Uh, he also indicated that in not so many words, that the efforts on this retail district might have been hindering the progress on the Farm Center. And that's what I felt all along, that our attention's been too much on that retail district and spending money there rather than time and effort on the Farm Center. My thoughts on that.
Now, well, hold on a minute. He didn't insinuate that in that meeting of, of that yesterday? He didn't say anything about the retail in that, in his presentation?
I said, I took it as that.
Okay, okay. I'm gonna make sure we clear on that because he didn't. Because what we do on retail, either side with the city or the county, shouldn't affect what goes on at the property of this, this, this owned by the joint city and county. Uh, our job is to make sure that we go forward and make sure that we can work out whatever details to make sure the Alpha Center comes here, Mr. Williams. And then that's Plan A, and then Plan, because without Plan A, there is no Plan B.
Exactly.
Okay. And I think that's gonna be worked out.
I think Plan A, Plan A ought to be the upfront for the whole thing. It has not been. Not, not to this commission's efforts, not to the IDA's efforts.
It has been totally the efforts of this commission and the IDA to make the Farm Center project happen. The retail is the only mechanism that we have to, to gain money from that.
How are we gonna gain the money? After what the, after what the consultant from Chicago had to say Friday at that meeting about those people coming, we're gonna be expecting the land to be given to them, and then tax abatements.
He has no idea what kind of agreements we've made. He made a generalized statement about what normally happens in recruitment of retail.
So in other words, the one we're recruiting is not gonna be the normal.
Hold on now. The guy that did this was studying the needs for a multi-use exhibition facility. A facility that you, you sat through that shows what the needs are in our community for a, for a hundred thousand square foot exhibition hall. He's done, this is one of the most renowned people in the United States that can be hired to do this type of stuff. He says this project will work. This is a project that can be used for things like horse shows.
I understand that.
Hold on, hold on. You, you're talking, I want to, you ask a question. Indoor rodeos, uh, basketball courts can handle four courts at the same time for travel ball. It can handle six volleyball courts. It has interchangeable floors, and he has a study here that shows this is the key. In conjunction with the Farm Center, this is a moneymaker for us. Without the Farm Center, it won't work. Okay? So what, if you go back and do a little bit of research and go back to the original marking study that was put out, the one that Alpha requisitioned, that original marking study says that this Alpha project, the Farm Center project that's been brought to the county, will not work unless it is built in full. And what they mean by work, meaning that it won't generate enough money to pay for itself, keep the annual upkeep costs, to staff it, then to operate it unless it's built. This exhibition hall is part of that original marking study. This exhibition hall, and I, I don't have the page number, but you saw the slides, of the number of people that it individually brings in to fill the event days, and I believe it was two hundred and sixty-five event days if I remember right, per year, uh, in this, brings people in at times when the Farm Center is not there. What I mean not there, I mean not open for business. A type event center like this brings in things on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, where most of your Farm Center type events are weekends. So, um, the city has multiple hotels. They have two new hotels that I understand have an option on a piece of property out at the two twelve that needs somebody to stay in their rooms through the week. And if we don't provide something out there to fill those gaps, all these restaurants and all of these hotels that we're gonna need here on the weekend can't be here through the week. So globally, when you look at the project, this is not only something that fits our community, it, it fits the need to sustain the retail that we're trying to recoup, recoup, recuperate, recruit. Now, Alan, if, if the county, everybody talks about how broke the county is all the time, and, and that's a fairly fair assessment. But the county has an opportunity here to invest in this property and invest in this center, and if y'all will remember, those of you that were around, and I think you were there, three years ago, I guess it was in February, when Alpha had a press conference over at City Hall, and they announced that they were gonna build here. Part of what Jimmy Parnell told everybody there was we're gonna build this center. And what y'all do to capture the money that comes here with the people that visit us is how y'all get paid. The ag authority, the way it is established by the state legislature, is essentially its own government within whatever county or municipality that it lies. They get to keep all of their own tax money, and they're not governed by us other than lawbreaking like drunks and that type of stuff. And what I mean by that is ordinances and taxes don't apply to them. So they get to recoup anything that happens inside of that gate, and that money is what pays to keep that thing operational. And we're talking about, from what I've understood, uh, about a three point six million dollar a year operating budget just to pay the people to be there, to clean up, to set up, and all those things that, that pertain to it. We're not gonna get any of that money, Alan. It takes everything that it generates to keep it open, power bill, whatever it is. So from a county and a city's perspective, the only thing that we get is those sales tax dollars that come here with these people that want to visit these things and spend their money. And we've had, and I've said this multiple times, but we've had analysis after analysis after analysis done, and they all say that it'll work. Now, the, the, the issue that we have now facing us, and I, I agree with Jimmy, that we need to work together, and I mean this Jimmy and Jimmy Parnell. We all need to work together to figure out how to resolve this thing. But, but we have two specific issues right now that are concerning us that could take this away from us. And if it takes it away from it, we'll go down in history very much like the conversation of Lowe's, and this commission doesn't want to be tied to that conversation. Fifteen years ago, Clayton had an opportunity to have Lowe's, and we don't have Lowe's. And everybody in this community holds the, the leadership at the time responsible for that. So what we need now is we need some kind of agreement, and I think we can reach an agreement with the Farmers Federation and the city on taking, not taking the clawbacks out, but giving them a reasonable extension for some reasonable requests from them. They've run into some issues, and they can say it's us, and we can say it's them. But the reality is today, trying to start a project on this kind of timeline without the availability of supplies and without the availability of labor, there's no way they're gonna make that timeline. So they're not gonna start a two hundred and fifty million dollar investment not knowing that they can finish it. That's, that's number one. So we've got it, we've got to figure out what the city needs and what we need and what they're willing to agree to. And there's some, there's some reasonable common ground there to, to extend those clawbacks. Now, I'm not a proponent of giving that money, that, that land away forever. I, I'm personally not a proponent of that. But if they would make some kind of commitment to us on what they, what they think they can do reasonably, I think the city would be reasonable, and I think y'all would be reasonable. But that's the first issue that we have. And the second issue is the bear in the room that we all have, have danced around now for over a year, and that's figuring out the utilities out here. And the utilities seem to be easy when you quantify them in saying, the city will provide it to the Farm Center. The Farm Center's in the city limits. The reality is that the county and the city have got to sit down in a way, and we can say without egos or whatever, but in a way to understand what the revenues are and what the costs are to get those there, and what we can all agree to live with. And I don't see any, any reason that we can't do that because we're all reasonable people. And if we can remove those two things, we can all go down in history as being members of the government that changed this community for the better forever.
Let me ask you a question. I'll ask all of y'all a question. Why would the city want to get back into bed with us on this project after what has been said about the city by at least one?
Wait a minute, don't let me finish. No, I'm not, because I'm gonna stop you right there. You need to ask the city that. You get on their agenda and ask the city that, okay?
I have asked the city.
Okay, you asked the city that, because I have met with the city too.
I'm asking the commission.
And I'm saying, I'm a commissioner, and you're asking, I'm answering you.
I haven't finished my question.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish my answer.
After what has been said about the city, about the mayor, and about across the street, calling them names, they've offered to work with us on more than one occasion, water and sewer. But we didn't want to work with them watering sewer. We talked to children water about getting the water.
So Alan.
And we've gone around and talked, let me finish. You talked, let me finish. Going and talked to engineers about putting a sewer system in. Why are we going after that? Why are we wasting money going after something the city has already said we will provide back to two thousand and fifteen? That's my question. It's wasting county money.
Alan, on February the third, in response to an email that, not an email, a letter that I delivered to the mayor on February first, the mayor provided me with a, a memorandum of understanding that they had rewritten from one that we had provided them with, okay? And in that agreement, what the mayor asked for was, the, the, there was a discussion about us buying their part out, and the mayor said he wanted to work on two oh five and two oh eight. And we met here and, and obligated or obliged ourselves to go talk to the mayor. And we went to the mayor, and we made the mayor a proposal through a, a binding agreement to buy him out and make him hold. And the mayor sent a revision back to us on February the third. And in that revision, the mayor agreed to all of our terms except he wanted to be able to keep the utilities for the entire two twelve area, and he wanted to keep. and he wanted to keep his revenue. And I responded back to the mayor that those two things made our project undoable. So, so we've got an ex, I'm, I'm explaining, I'm explaining.
Okay.
We've got an exhibition hall out there that, that the marking study shows that we, we have to do to, to support our community in a way that it is financially advantageous for us to have this event center here. All right. With, with the district capped over that land out there, and you know what a retail district is, we've talked about that. Same thing that's at Bass Pro Shop. It makes that district available to collect all of the tax money that's due to the county and the city. Okay? They can take that money and pay their payments on the bond without putting those payments on the taxpayers of the county. And that's been the theory of this for almost three years, is that we would make that retail pay the bills. And without a portion of, not all of, but a portion of our taxes and a portion of the city's taxes, however you want to feed it. Now, you can feed it through a cooperative district, a retail cooperative district, or you can feed it through an agreement between the two of us. But without an agreement to share the revenue and share the expenses out there, we can't pay for this thing without putting the burden of it on the taxpayers of the county.
What was the original agreement, city and county? Was it, is there a copy of it anywhere?
There was no original.
No original agreement?
No.
So this was going into the handshake and blind. Nobody knew what was actually gonna happen?
There, there, there's a simple memorandum that was signed by both parties that said that we were partners, and we're gonna share in all the expenses and revenues equally of the Farm Center. That was done before Billy Joe passed away. And nothing else has happened. And can we get past where we are right now with reasonable minds? You dang right, we can. We can. Cause there's an answer to this. And you know, when we started this project, we, we, we got a lot of applause from all over the South, because we were doing something that very few communities had ever been able to do. And that was a partnership between a county and a municipality. And we got a lot of, of people that were focusing on how positive that was, that we were able to work together. And I haven't given up on that. There's been, there's been opportunities to partner. There's been opportunities to buy out. There's, there's been, there's been a lot of discussion back and forth, and we, we hit a roadblock. And we haven't pursued it anymore. And because we hit a roadblock with the funding mechanism for this, and we couldn't get past it, that's when we started looking for secondary options. And those secondary options is, one is, Chilton Water has the rights already to the water for what we're talk, calling the triangle. The city doesn't have those rights. The Chilton Water has those rights.
I think the city has them now.
Two.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, Chilton Water's voted to give them up.
When?
Well, I mean, can, can I?
Well, I get past, I got, I got.
You got the Chilton Water man sitting there. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I hadn't seen a vote.
There was an agreement developed in twenty nineteen when this come about. Billy Joe wanted the utility, because somebody went to fire the sewer, and naturally sewer goes with the water. But during that time, Billy Joe passed, and it's been at a standstill the whole time. But what we had done, we had relinquished our rights just to the ag center. So Billy, or the city could come in there. And now, after all of that, there's nothing, never been signed or whatever, so.
It was, it was never ratified?
It was another handshake, kind of.
It's not even a handshake.
It was a document that was given to them, but it was never signed since twenty nineteen when we sent it to them.
Well, listen here. And, and Mr. Williams, I, I want to address you in this way. And, 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 and I'm trying to be as professional and as, and as Christian as I can be, because I don't have to prove a point. Okay? But you said something a while ago that re, this, this really was true, that name-calling and everything, but I can tell you, Jimmy Hardy ain't calling nobody's name. I can tell you. So I'm gonna defend me. I'm gonna, hey, you said, let me talk, let me talk.
I have to agree with you.
I know that these men on this board I hear, and the men I'm looking at from the city, representing the city in this, in this room, have got enough common sense to come to a table. Maybe we not agree, but the, the, the question at hand is not right, this right now. My main important thing is, is Alpha gonna put that project out there? Because this is worthless to discussion.
That's true.
If they don't. So let's just take one at a time and move forward. And I, I have met with the mayor, me and the mayor, if you don't mind me saying, met today. I have met with the mayor, and we talked about what it takes to move forward, guys. And it's simple. It's simple. And he's gonna have his meeting, and he's gonna, we're gonna, he's gonna discuss it. But listen, we gotta get away from this petty stuff all around. I don't care if you're not, if I'm not talking to you, then don't look in the mirror. We gotta get away from this petty stuff, okay? Everybody, we're grown adults here. We want, listen, we're not talking about what's gonna affect us. We're talking about what's gonna affect the future of Chilton County and the state of Alabama. That's what we're talking about. And I'm gonna tell you like I told a man last night, I can promise you this. I'm not going around to be the stupidest idiot that ever walked through Chilton County. My family plan is gonna stay in here. But I am gonna do my due diligence and work my tail off to work with the city and work with those who we can move this project forward and get out of this thing. Okay, I can't change the last fifteen minutes of my life, fellas. I can't change the last ten years of my life, but I have control of my future. And if I trust in the Lord like I have, and I prayed all night, and I prayed this morning, and I prayed today about it, I said, God, show us the way. And if you'll trust in Him too, He'll show us the way. And I'm not gonna preach to you, but I'm just telling you. Because listen, guys, I know we after the same prize, or we're not? You know what I mean? And I understand what the city's position is about revenue. They gotta protect their revenue, so does the county. But I think there's a way we can do that. That's why I want to address you. Thank you.
I was agreeing with you.
Okay.
I hadn't heard you call it about anything.
Now, can we move on? Oh, sorry, you had something else, didn't you?
Uh. Yeah, the IDA. I think they've been a stumbling block to this whole process.
Alan, again, is this the time or the place for it?
Why not? They want more money in their budget.
Uh, well.
And.
Have you looked at the budget?
Yeah.
That they're not getting anymore.
They're not getting what they wanted. They're getting extra. They're getting more.
They're getting decreased.
No, no, no. It's increased over last year, decreased over there.
Yeah.
They're way decreased over what.
They didn't get the two hundred and fifty thousand they wanted, after we talked about giving them a hundred thousand. That's done been decreased a little bit.
Okay, I'm sorry for interrupting.
I just, I think they're overfunded.
I think they're grossly underfunded compared to comparable county sizes.
I ain't, I'm not concerned about comparable counties. I'm concerned about what they have actually put on this table in the two years they've been here for the money that they have taken out of this county compared. I'll give you a comparison. I take the money we're gonna extra give them, give it to the Firefighters Association. It'll come back to everybody in this county a whole lot more than giving it to the IDA.
Alan, we, we have a project here that the IDA has almost exclusively driven that is ours for the losing, that has on the table, on the table, over a twenty-year period, confirmed by three different economists, a hundred and seventy million dollars in local tax money. And you don't think they've done anything?
I'm moving, Jerry.
I bear the difference.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.